All right, now we are here this evening for a public hearing on application 212, request for variance from Article III, lot size requirements for a two-family dwelling unit above commercial space at 578 Tenny Mountain Highway on a .38 acre parcel. All right, I ask Mr. French to come forward. Hi there.
(inaudible)
Kevin?
Hey.
Let's shoot the fur up then. Okay. I'll have a good look at it here. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Kevin French representing, and as you probably know, this is a lot out on Tenny Mountain Highway, right next to Granite State Glass. We were in, I believe it was in 2011, and we had a variance and special exception for a three-unit apartment building on this lot. At this point in time, they would like to do a little different configuration by having a two-story building that has, a 40-by-50 building that has commercial on the first floor and two-bedroom residential units on the second floor. The area that I've outlined in pink here is the setbacks in the zone, and this blue area that I've highlighted is existing building. That existing building would be removed, obviously, and replaced by a 40-by-50 foot two-story building that would be compliant and within the setback requirements, as obviously this one is not, presently is not. And I don't know if you want, I can go through the list of each one of the...
The reasons, the rationale on the application?
Yes.
Would the board members like that? I don't know that that's necessary, but...
I mean, I get, well, just to hit on the first, as far as the surrounding, affecting the surrounding values, it's actually would be an improvement in the area, because the, you know, the existing building has kind of outlived its usefulness. It's an old, kind of, it's a tired, older house that was a residence, and they kind of converted it into a commercial. But this would be, you know, a vast improvement and be in keeping with what's in the area. And...
It's not currently being resided in, right?
I may?
Nobody lives there right now?
No, I don't believe so. No.
Just used as commercial space right now?
Yeah.
Storage area?
Storage, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And certainly improving it and redoing it wouldn't be contrary to the public interest. It would, you know, it would actually be an improvement, and the access in and out is, would be presently maintained the way it is, and there would also be a one-way exit to get out onto Smith Bridge Road, to go either way, or to come back out onto Tenny Mountain Highway. You know, it does satisfy a need for commercial space out on the highway while also, you know, kind of optimizing the use of the property. And the reason that we're here for the variance is because by rule, it requires 46,000 square feet, and we only have basically a third of that. We have like 13,000 square feet or something, 16,000 square feet. And part of that is, part of, these lots were all somewhat created by when they relocated Tenny Mountain Highway. This was the original road, the original Tenny Mountain Highway, Route 25, whatever. And then when they relocated it, it left these lots in the middle as kind of a, you know, smaller reduced lots, which obviously was before planning and zoning, but it still was kind of how they, factors into how they were created like this. Let's see. "The benefit cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method that would not impose undue financial burden." I guess, you know, basically the answer to that, one of the answers to that is, this does allow for a, kind of an optimization of this lot. And as we know, the lot's out on Tenny Mountain Highway, quite valuable and quite expensive, and it's, you know, it kind of behooves one to utilize them to their best maximum ability. It would do substantial justice, because it would actually improve what's there and actually bring it more into compliance. And I know these are site plan issues, but we do have adequate parking and things like that, so all of the, all of those other site plan issues, we can, regulations, we can meet. And it won't be contrary to the ordinance, because it actually, it actually updates it and brings it more in compliance with what the ordinances are now, for everything except the lot size, which we can't, we can't change that.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, or Mr. French?
I do. Let me find it somewhere. I had a concern, Kevin, about the...
I'll give you a chance, okay?
The amount of impervious surface between the building and the parking and the road and the driveway.
Yep. Let's see, the sun hits on that, but it's like 30...
66 percent is what...
Of the lot is, sorry?
I calculated the impervious surface at 66 percent.
Right, okay.
The new?
Right.
Yes. Projected.
Okay.
Proposed.
That gave me some concern. The second one that I had was, the access in must be an easement, because the glass company uses...
Right, they have, you're right. There's a common easement, they have a common easement here, and they also have a easement to this area, this line, and over to here, for common use to that, to both lots.
What does that easement say in terms of its use?
I don't know, I don't believe it specifically, it limits anything, but I don't recall what the easement, how that easement was written for that, that common use. Do you have any?
I don't.
That, I just know that they did leave this strip through, excuse me, this easement through here, so that they could, you know, get through and both utilize that area.
I understand that. My concern is whether or not it can be used for the kind of development that you people are proposing on that lot, or does it need its own entrance off the road, because it exceeds what that easement would allow?
I don't, I don't believe it would. I do know that it would, it would be difficult to get two driveways, because of the state requirements. And I don't, I believe that's why they did it before, and I don't think there was any limitation, but I can't tell you exactly if there was or not, but I don't believe that...
We can obtain that deed right now, if you wish.
Okay, the easement?
Yeah, because we keep the deeds downstairs.
Okay. But why don't we, why don't we see if we might need that or adjourn for a few minutes to do that?
It's entirely up to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Does anybody, people want to see that?
Well, it's a concern that I have.
Yeah, I mean, it would be interesting to know what it is.
Put that away, shall we?
Be right back.
Okay. All right, then why don't we just take a minute for this? And sir, you'll definitely get a chance after the board questions, and we'll open the public hearing, so people in the public can ask anything they want, okay? Just wanted to make sure, you know.
Let's see, is it a site plan review? Well, I guess I can't talk to them.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just wait. Hey Neil. I can understand. All right, we'll reopen, and Mr. Murphy was kind enough to go downstairs to look for the easement on this property under discussion.
The only language in here, Madam Chair, is concerning use of property, is the right to draw water from the Roby property.
Which property?
The Roby property, which is this one, back here.
Oh, that one.
So it may have been water line, or they might have proposed a common drive at that point, but it's not mentioned in here, in any of these deeds. Oh, wait a minute. Small tract of less than one-tenth of an acre, but it's not described, conveyed to the state of New Hampshire for highway purposes, so that might have been on the front portion of the lot. And then there was a saving for the business that was located by prior, previously. But there's no physical description of that easement.
Okay. Just making sure that there's no other easement.
2662.
You mean these numbers here?
Yeah, it's put 2662.
No, it was only reflected in the later deeds about not locating a real estate business.
Okay, yeah.
Because Mary had owned the property before Mary dragged.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And though, that only appeared once she acquired the property.
Right. That's all, that...
Yeah, that's the highway purposes.
Yes, that's before that.
But they all match.
As I believe when they did this, they each gave cross easements for common use of the entrance, so, and I don't have the copy of that deed with me, of course.
Okay. Okay, so right now, we just, we don't know what the wording is, or if any restrictions were on the deed. You just believe it was joint access for both?
Right, I know that's what it was for, because the same owner owns both properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, does anybody have any other questions, Dave?
The first, the first floor is going to be commercial use, right?
Yes.
The second floor is residential use?
Yes.
How many units, did you say, three?
Two, well, two residential, one commercial on the first floor, and then two residential units on the second floor.
And the commercial on the first floor is all the same business? They saw multiple offices in there?
Not sure yet.
Okay. Could be multiple businesses downstairs?
It could, I don't know how many you could put in there, but I can't imagine more than two.
Okay, so you're not contemplating just having more storage, use for storage? It's actual commercial, like office or something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
And the parking was predicated on the growth square footage, so that wouldn't change if it was carved up?
Mm-hmm. And the residential units, are we talking about how many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms each.
Okay. All right. Okay, and is there anybody who has any other questions?
Let me come think of something in my jacket.
All right, then I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody who'd like to speak in favor. Yes, sir? Could you please identify yourself?
My name is Richard Dionne. I own the property.
Okay.
Identified as Red Barn owner.
Okay.
And I would love to shed what you have on here that doesn't exist. I only have a couple of questions I am in favor of, a couple of questions to clear up. Did you point out where the rear of the building is facing?
The...
The front of the building, then, is going to be facing the Granite State Building?
Yeah, this, no, there's a, the entrance to this building...
I can't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry. The entrance is actually on this corner.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a...
Yeah, this map shows it.
Yeah, so, the drive is over here on the Granite State, so this would be the common room, common area.
Yep.
So you would go up, and this would be...
This is your size.
Right, right, okay.
Okay.
And there is...
This would be...
This goes this way.
Okay.
So your property is over here.
No, that's...
No, Tenny Mountain Highway is here. This is the common entrance here.
Yep.
This is the, Smith Bridges over here, this is the back entrance. Here over here.
And that's, that's, that's facing, that's the long side facing your property?
Yep, that's fine. I just wanted to...
Sure.
Okay.
See what you're going to be looking at. Call for light. I'll be here next month. The other question I had is, if you have two apartments, and most families today end up with two cars each, that's four cars, and you have in and out of whatever the retail or whatever commercial use is going to be, is there enough parking for that?
Yeah, we have, we've met, we do meet the parking requirement for the, for the residence and for the square footage of the office building, so...
Is it retail or offices? You don't know yet?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
I would like to see it officers. Retail's just going to generate too much traffic, and we don't have, you know, I've got to be cautious of the traffic flow in and out, and for the glass company.
Yeah.
We have, we have, actually have 12 spaces for the building.
Only 11 are required.
Okay, two of which handicap.
Okay.
Okay.
Question is, septic and water, but I presume you already have access to...
Yeah, that's already to the site, and that's municipal, so there'll be town water and town sewer.
It goes underneath Tenny Mountain.
Connected into the town water and sewer.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we are in favor of this, we need support.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or have neutral comments? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. French. We'll, let's see what the board wants to do, discuss or finding of facts.
I've got a question for the board.
Okay.
Is impervious surface a site plan review issue, or is it a zoning issue?
Well, I believe it's a site plan review issue.
Well, it's in here.
But, yeah.
It's in the ordinance, so it would be, and they're not looking for relief from that, because they're under the limit. 66 percent versus 75. 75 is the upper limit of impervious surface.
And they're at 66?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's some, it's something we can take note of, Dave, it's not, but it's not really an issue here?
Well, I'm worried, you know, I went out there and looked at it. It's higher than the glass company want, and I was worried about drainage. I mean, that became an issue that I was concerned about.
They will be at site plan review if they pass muster here.
I see.
Okay, well, do you want to start with findings of fact?
Sure. It does seem that they have ample parking.
Okay, well, why don't we start by saying, plan is...
With adequate parking.
Yep. Aple parking.
Lots where the ordinance requires.
Or plan, the plan is for commercial space on ground floor.
Mm-hmm.
With two residential units on second floor. We didn't talk...
I think you have to make a finding that deals with the purpose of the variance in the first place, which is a substandard lot.
Right, well, that's what I'm getting to. It's, it will take place on .38 acres or 16,552 square feet, whereas the zoning ordinance requires about one acre, right?
46,050.
46,000 something square feet. And that's, that's why they're asking for relief. The zone is split, lot is on agricultural and industrial, commercial zones.
Public water and sewer.
Water and sewer exists to what? Now, I was reading, Mr. Murphy in the planners' report, something about, do we have to find out from water and sewer if there's adequate...
I did ask Jason for those numbers, but in other conversations I've had very recently with him, the addition of potentially four, well, two residences and commercial, they have more than enough capacity for that.
Okay, that's, so that's not a problem.
Do you have to make a comment about the fact that the uses are allowed in the area, in the, in the zone?
Well, except for the split zone aspect of it, because it's not. It's a special exception use. It's a permitted use on one side and a special exception use on the other.
Right, a special exception would be required for the residential use.
Right, which we'd get to after the variance, but it's whether the, we have to get through the variance. Let's see, what else did we want to put in? Access is from Tenny Mountain Highway, and second exit is on to Smith Bridge Road.
I want you to know that I would vote against that finding, because we haven't had any evidence, other than the physical thing of what's there, in terms of what the easement is.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, well, I was putting the easement, secondly, you'd vote against access is from Tenny Mountain Highway?
I would say. So then we can decide, well, if the setbacks are met, if the parking regulations are met, then the density or the usage of this property hasn't violated the provisions of the rule, and therefore the purpose must be valid.
I don't think we make a finding that way. I think we go through our criterion and that kind of things.
It could almost be viewed as an undersized lot of record, even though it's already been previously developed.
I understand that.
Right.
No, no, this is...
It's a non-41.
No, I understand, David, this is supporting what you're saying, that, oh...
There's a reason for that size lot, being 46,000 feet.
Yes, I understand.
And the variance is to say, it's okay to have it smaller.
Correct.
As we view it now, because the purpose is not going to be violated the way the thing is designed.
I agree with you 100 percent.
And we say that within the context of our, of our criteria.
And I'm saying that's a finding that we have to make.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm saying that would be the criteria.
And I'm saying you're wrong.
Okay, well, so what did, what did the other two members want to do? I mean, I don't, I don't understand that as a finding. We're finding facts here, that's, in my view, an opinion, okay? That's an interpretation of the zoning ordinance, that's not a fact. A fact is, it's a .38 acre lot.
Substandard lot.
Substandard lot, substandard in accordance to our current zoning ordinance. So anything else is opinion and interpretation, which we're allowed to do under our criteria. When we're applying the criteria to the case, then that's...
I understand, David, this is supporting what you're saying, that, oh...
There's a reason for that size lot, being 46,000 feet.
No, yes, I understand.
And the variance is to say, it's okay to have it smaller.
Correct.
As we view it now, because the purpose is not going to be violated the way the thing is designed.
I agree with you 100 percent.
And we say that within the context of our, of our criteria.
And I'm saying that's a finding that we have to make.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm saying that would be the criteria.
And I'm saying you're wrong.
Okay, well, I mean, so what do, what do the other two members want to do? I mean, I don't, I don't understand that as a finding. We're finding facts here, that's, in my view, an opinion, okay? That's an interpretation of the zoning ordinance, that's not a fact. A fact is, it's a .38 acre lot.
Substandard lot.
Substandard lot, substandard in accordance to our current zoning ordinance. So anything else is opinion and interpretation, which we're allowed to do under our criteria. When we're applying the criteria to the case, then that's when we can finesse that.
I think if you read the relevant law, you're wrong. Do what you want.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any, any other findings?
Yeah, the part that says in our master plan recommending higher density for mixed uses, especially out in that area, this would be one that would apply to that.
But that can only be viewed as a nudge and not law, since it hasn't been written into the zoning yet.
Right, this is...
But that's, that's what the current master plan is indicating.
None of the language in the master plan. Okay. All right, so you go through the criteria. Number one, and I just asked... Number one, and I just asked members as we go through it if you want to voice in supporting information. Number one, granting the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. I'm going to start with you, Dave.
I say that's true.
Okay.
True.
I would say that's true.
True.
Okay, number two, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. It's Dave?
I would say that's wrong, because you didn't make a finding, the purpose of the public interest has been met, which is what I've been trying to tell you.
Okay.
Which I'm willing to vote for, if you'd simply write it down as a finding.
True.
You think that's true? Okay, I agree with you, Dave, that it's false because of provisions that are in our zoning ordinance. So, but, you know, that's basically the nature of a variance, is asking permission to violate the zoning ordinance, so. What do you think, Stephanie?
I was going to say true.
Pardon?
True.
Okay, Butch.
Madam Chair, could you define public interest for me?
Well, the zoning ordinance, the purposes of the zoning ordinance support the public interest, right? Exists here to, that's what the community wanted as far as development. I'd say density comes into that, and the layout and different, what we allow, what uses we allow and which zones, is what the people ask for. So I would call that, that's within the public interest, that the...
So public interest is the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, it's what the community decided when we passed the zoning ordinance. So, you know, guide development and growth while protecting wetlands, natural habitat, this whole purpose that's listed on page one of our zoning ordinance. Let's say defines the public interest.
Does it speak to density?
It does. Number three, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant upon proof that, A, the zoning restriction as applied to the applicant's property interferes with the applicant's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment. Okay, Dave?
Are we going to do conditions before we try to pass this? Isn't it normal we would do the conditions that we want to put upon approval prior?
Because you think that it's a unique setting in a split-zone lot, a substandard lot, presents an unnecessary hardship. So is that what you're saying is true?
I think that the substandard lot preexisted and existed and we're stuck with it, and if he wants to reasonably use it, he should be able to do that.
Okay.
Having said that, would you change your vote on criteria number two?
Not without a finding.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Butch, you're up.
True.
Okay, I'm going to say false. And the reason I say false is because I think it's being put to reasonable use right now. So I don't think it's the fact that it's on a substandard lot means it can't be used for a reasonable use. Okay, Stephanie?
True.
Okay, we have three trues. B, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. Okay, Dave? It's very hard for most people to understand this, Farn. And this is the one, this is the hurdle that always really hurt, I have a hard time with variances, because it's saying if you grant the variance, that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction Are you having a hard time, Dave, because of what you wanted finding?
Yeah, I guess I am.
Yeah, I mean, see, this is exactly what we're talking about, that's why I thought it was appropriate to take care of it in this area.
Well, B had been written in English, it might have been...
Yeah, well, you're right, this is always the problem, it's...
It's simplex.
Reading it, right, reading saying, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant upon proof that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction of the property. I mean, that's probably an insurmountable hurdle for anything, because obviously, why would we pass a zoning ordinance that, you know, it's not something bizarre here that we're talking about. There's a substandard lot.
More against residential building than commercial. I mean, Tenny Mountain Highway is relatively new compared to the zoning ordinance. And all of the feedback that we've gotten from the master plan, though it hasn't been enacted into zoning at this point.
Right.
Would indicate that we would jump all over this for development, because it answers a number of questions. The, one, we have a housing crisis, not only in the state, but here in Plymouth. And also, we are trying to bolster commercial activity on Tenny Mountain Highway, and we got a twofer right here.
Right. Okay, you know what I think? I think, Dave, that this is very inflexible, our criteria, and I'm just wondering, just if the board is feeling like we would be willing to grant a variance for this purpose, that maybe we should make a finding this time. As Dave is suggesting, that in this instance, because here we are, I mean, literally, we understand the legal mumbo jumbo, this, it makes no sense for us as a zoning board to find that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the provisions in our zoning ordinance. That's always the part that I just can't say.
Right.
No, we have, there's a, you know, fair relationship there.
In 1960.
Well, even today, there's a fair relationship, but...
For the most part.
Right.
And not to argue with that.
Right, but that's where we distinguish, if we say this is a unique setting, because this property, it's an old house, they're going to improve the site by knocking down this old house where nobody's been living and where they've been basically using as storage space, and they're going to make something out of it on our very highly, you know, desirable commercial area.
It's unsightly.
It's very unsightly.
If I could offer one thing, if this was a vacant lot, it wouldn't need a variance.
Mm-hmm. It wouldn't.
Well...
To do what they want to do, it would need a special exception.
No, you're right, but a lot of the onus is off. I mean, so this property in the highly valuable commercial strip will be doomed forever to be a single-family home.
Mm-hmm, right, in between, you know, all these commercial...
Correct.
Buildings. So I think that's a consideration.
Neither fair and substantial, nor is it a public benefit.
Well, in reality...
In my opinion.
In reality, it's going to become more conforming.
Right.
After the development than it is before the development.
That's true.
Right. Well, see, I have a hard time voting that that's true, but...
Well, it is, because right now it violates a setback violation, if nothing else.
That's true.
And it won't when this is done.
Okay.
There's no relationship between area and, or frontage.
Okay.
And acreage, when you have water and sewer.
Okay. You know what, then, I am going to change my vote on number two, the public interest. I'm going to change my false to true. Makes three true. Okay, and then, Butch, did you vote on B?
No, I didn't.
Okay, you didn't vote. Were you able to get a word in edgewise?
That's true.
Okay, you say it's true.
Yeah, I said true.
And I'm saying true, that's three trues. Now, what do you say?
Which one do you...
We're on B, we're on the hurdle that we couldn't get over. We're trying to get over the hurdle.
Substantial relationship.
Why can I not convince you to make a simple finding?
Okay.
Why can't I do that?
Okay, we'll make a simple finding, if that will help you get over the hurdle.
Help your lot.
Okay, all right, let's make the finding here. You tell us what it is, Dave.
The purposes of the zoning ordinance, as it applies to this lot, will not be violated.
Okay, there is a zoning ordinance as applied to this lot. Will not be violated.
By the proposed development. If you want to really tighten it up, you can throw a thing about, we're curing a non-conforming...
Yeah, it's a non-conforming lot.
Non-conformity development of the lot.
That will cure existing blight and setback.
Setback.
Setback violations.
Then I'm happy, I'll vote for number two and I'll vote for number B.
Okay, in accordance with new master plan, plan direction, it will provide much-needed, what do we call it, double use?
Mixed.
Mixed use. And badly needed housing. Okay, that's our finding, that goes in the finding of facts.
Thank you.
And so now we're able to change number two, Dave, that makes that unanimous.
Correct.
And B, that's also unanimous. Okay, I'm going to change A. My vote on A will be unanimous. And this is C now, the variance would not injure the private or, public or private rights of others. Starting with you, Dave?
I will vote for that if we put a condition in.
Okay.
That a recorded easement identified.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
The rights of this piece of property versus its neighbor.
Yes, or just present the easement to...
Be presented to...
Recorded easement be reviewed by...
Well, they can go create it tomorrow. I mean, the owner owns both pieces of property.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have the recorded easement, they could certainly...
If it hasn't already, they can go make one.
Quit claims.
Right, right, okay, so that will be, so is that satisfactory by Mr. Murphy? Recorded easement be reviewed by, reviewed and resolved?
And presented at site plan review if the project passes muster here.
Okay, presented...
Put in both your folders.
Presented...
Yes, well, that'll go to the tax people and they'll take care of that.
Site plan review, okay. All right, so Butch, what do you vote on that?
True.
I vote true. Stephanie?
True.
Okay, that's true. Now, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Dave?
I'd ask the board what experience they've got with the substandard lots. Is this typical handling of a substandard lot?
It's gone both ways, depends on what it was.
Well, I think it's fair.
Yeah.
So I would say it's true.
Okay, Butch?
True.
I think it's true, based on new direction from our, the master plan, language that we cited, and also the fact that it hasn't been used as a single-family house, and it will improve, improve the area. Okay, Stephanie?
True.
Okay, we've got unanimous. And number five, the use will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Well, considering the finding that we made, I think we could say that's true.
Yeah, true.
Butch, true?
True.
True, okay, unanimous. Okay, I would entertain a motion then.
Move that you grant the variance, subject to the easement condition.
Okay.
Anybody else have another condition they want to...
Didn't we say something else? Double the density, let's see, I thought we said something for a condition. Let me say something. Just the easement. No, okay, oh, and, well, I think we settled it, was the question about water and sewer, whether it was adequate?
Yes, I don't have the documents, but I...
Right, but some kind of confirmation, as long as you've received confirmation.
Oh, absolutely, Jason has the paperwork and I could report that back.
Put it in there.
Yeah, I think that's good. Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, variance granted. All right, that means we get to move on to the, sorry this was so painful.
It's okay, you guys are getting along. It's going his way.
It's very difficult with the language.
Was that you?
That was Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right.
And thank you, and I am...
Welcome.
It does please me a little bit to see that you guys struggle as much with some of these things as I do, trying to write the answers to them in a fair...
Well, it's, yeah, it is, it's very difficult with variances, because you're basically approving a violation, but as long as it makes sense and we had the, oh, that, I wanted to add that to the facts, that a Butters came and agreed.
In support.
In support, because that's always very important, so we appreciate your coming for that.
You too, thank you.
Okay, we will listen to special exception.
And this is because of the mixed use and the, which is allowed, I believe this is allowed in the agricultural zone, and it's, it requires a special exception for the ICD zone, which, just to show you, this is the line, this line right here separates, this is agricultural, and that's...
That's a weird line.
I don't know why it breaks through the lots like that, but that's the way it runs. And this is allowed by special exception.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, a lot of the reasons for this are the same ones that we just went through. It's, you know, it's an appropriate use, and it's, the lot can, it can support it and meet all the conditions for the zoning requirements of either zone. And again, it, we, you know, for the same reasons, it won't adversely affect the neighboring property, and the same, it won't, it won't cause an excess burden to the town, because the service, the water and sewer services are already there to the site and connected, and it won't, it's not that big of a, it's not going to be a huge increase in load on either one of those things. As far as safety goes, it would be... As far as safety goes, it would be, it's again, common, a common entrance which we'll get the easements for. And an access out the back is, you know, it provides additional safety to that.
Okay, any, anyone have questions for Mr. French?
You didn't mean to imply it's one-way, did you?
What's that?
You didn't mean to imply the entrance is one-way, did you?
No, the, the exit going out this way is one-way, but the entrance is.
You can't come in from the back road.
No, no, this was going to be one-way out. Now, I'm not going to guarantee you that nobody's going to drive in that way, so.
I don't think that's going to hold very long.
Well, it's always been kind of risky because it's a cut through to Tenny Mountain, but you've had a chain up for a while, right?
What's that?
You said, wasn't there a chain across the driveway for a while?
I don't know. I'm sure people have. I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm sure that.
It was years ago, it hasn't been up in quite a while.
Hasn't been up for a while.
We were nervous somebody was going to drive through there at night.
Right.
Look, I'll ask you a question. Suppose there's no appetite for people to live on the highway like that. Is your intent then that you may use office space or some other kind of commercial venture in the second floor?
I don't believe so. You know.
I, that's, I don't know. Hey, I don't know if I can't, if we can't rent it as an apartment, we would have to do, do something with it. Whether it be offices, again, we have to be very cautious of traffic and parking because it's, it's tight. You know, we've got employees and I, I don't want a lot of cars there.
If, if they, if they were going to change it, we'd have to be in for another variance because if it changed to commercial.
Different use, yeah.
Different use would have to be in, and if it changed to commercial, we'd have a parking problem. Because the parking requirements for commercial are more than they have for residential.
You'd need 14 spaces.
Right, okay.
Okay.
What does screened location mean?
What's that?
Screened location in the back.
Screened lawn?
What's this one?
This thing here.
That's the dumpster.
Okay.
On the screen.
A lot of trash.
Well, see here in this application, it says that you're talking with DOT and stuff about a light or roundabout at the Smith Bridge Road. Is that something that come up?
I've heard that before. I don't know, you know, I don't know if I'll live long enough to see it.
It'll be, we're hoping to get it on to the next tenure plan for DOT. We're meeting with the TAC from Lakes Region Planning Commission tomorrow.
I mean, I suspect as a practical matter, at some point in, I don't know how far future, there's going to have to be something at Smith Bridge Road, whether it's a light or a roundabout or something.
But that wouldn't reach this far down the road, would it?
Yeah, that would be, that's up here, but, you know, obviously. If there was, if there was a light there, that would, probably more of the traffic would go through and go down to the light, I would suspect, so. Or roundabout or whatever was down there.
They are getting out of there in some days.
The police chief has said it's the most accident-ridden spot in the town.
Quincy, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty hairy. Very hairy, yeah.
But DOT and Lakes Region are receptive to the idea, but they have the forms that must be obeyed, so.
Right, right.
You know, it'll be 2030 before we have a chance, no, seriously, to actually get on there.
Okay, well, I'm going to suggest that we make, adopt the same findings for the special exception since it's.
One more question for the planner.
Okay.
The real issue here is whether they have two residential units here, is that correct? That's the real issue.
For the special exception, correct.
That's the only reason for.
The only reason.
Yeah, in the industrial zone, right. So, okay, would you like to adopt the same findings of fact that we had for the variance? Is that, makes it easier? Or do you want to make new findings?
Madam Chair, I'd suggest that you add that it's a special exception use in that zone.
Yeah, it is. And both.
It's a finding of fact.
Okay. Well, we do that one, number one, with our criteria, right? The proposed use.
Do we want to open this up to public hearing?
Oh, oh gosh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We can open this up to a public hearing if there's anybody who would wish to support the special exception.
I will support, but I want to make an additional comment. The DOT has stopped by our office when we were doing our water line and sewer underneath the highway. In talking to the supervisor, whatever his title was, he drove a truck as opposed to working, so. They did make the comment that they were looking seriously at a light over at Smith Bridge Road. We share the same problem they have. We have traffic that goes through our lot constantly. I've been forced to park a tractor in the middle of our driveway to keep people from cutting through. And our neighbor on the other side generates the majority of that traffic. But I'm, I have no problems with what they're trying to do, and in fairness to you as a group, I will be here next month asking for, I don't know what I'm going to be asking for, except I'm going to be putting a building up.
Okay.
Talking to Ryan here shortly.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mr. Dean.
May I ask you a question, Mr. French?
Sure.
When people are cutting through your lot.
Yep.
Are they leaving the ATC and then heading back to Smith Bridge Road?
Well, they've, they've discovered that because Smith Bridge Road intersection with Tenny Mountain is difficult. They cut through our yard and come out onto Tenny Mountain Highway.
Oh, just to avoid the queue of traffic.
Just to avoid that queue of traffic.
Thank you.
Or they make the, I don't know if they smoke before they get to ATC, but they're going through the wrong driveway. Just to be clear, I don't have a problem with that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dean.
Well, this could lead one to the conclusion it's safer if it doesn't go through.
All right, Mr. MacIver.
Hi, I'm Neil MacIver. I live in the neighborhood and I'm familiar with the property and I've been watching the whole neighborhood develop over the years. And I, I support the, this project that I think is in keeping with what's happening on Tenny Mountain Highway. And it might be a little more encouragement for DOT to start moving.
Okay, thank you, Mr. MacIver. All right, and I see no one else willing to speak, so I will pose a public hearing. And now we will go down our criteria. Number one, the proposed use shall be only those allowed in the ordinance by special exception.
True.
True.
True?
True.
Okay. Number two, the specific site is in appropriate location and of adequate size for the use. Dave?
I'm supposed to give a rationale?
That was left on here. Generally, we only ask rationales for negative findings.
Yeah.
But you can certainly.
Yeah, you can say whenever you want.
The town is seeking additional residential rental space in the master plan.
Yep.
So I think it's true.
Okay.
True.
I believe it's true for the same purposes stated.
True.
Okay. Number three, the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
I think that's true.
Okay.
True.
I believe it's true because they're surrounded, I mean, there's one other single-family residence in the area, but otherwise it's commercial and the butters were here to support. Okay, number, Stephanie, okay, that's unanimous. Number four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
No pedestrians are an issue. Everybody walking on that highway is, is a problem. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Do pedestrians walk on the highway? I mean, there's a few, mostly people who like work out at Walmart or something, but I don't know that it's. I don't know that people are going to be walking to this building, right? Is it, does it, does that problem, is that specific to this building?
Right.
I don't know about that.
I don't.
I don't think it'll be any more, add to it anymore than it is already out there.
Right. I was going to say, it, the, anybody who's walking along there takes their life in their hands.
There aren't any sidewalks.
And there are no sidewalks, right. That's the problem.
And in this location, there are swales adjacent to the road towards, across the street, it's low.
Right. So I don't see it as a nuisance other than, and hopefully DOT, we do know that intersection with Quincy Road, which is nearby, is very dangerous and hopefully they'll be solving that problem.
I don't think this building or what they're doing with this, proposing to do with this lot changes any of those problems in any way.
Right. Yeah, I don't think so either. I think it's not big enough. If it was all commercial, it would be a different story.
So are we on number?
Four.
Four.
Yeah, number four.
I'd like to have a statement for a rationale that site plan review will take care of drainage issues.
Okay, let's add that as a special exception condition. Drainage issues dealt with by planning board. On site plan review. Okay. All right, so did we all vote on that, number four?
Yeah.
Dave's going to vote.
Okay, Dave?
True.
True.
True?
True.
Okay. All right, and we'll just add that as a condition. We want to make sure drainage is looked at by site plan review. Number five, the use will not play successive or undue burden on town services and facilities.
True.
True.
I think that's true.
True.
As long as, and we're, we're going to hear from water and sewer. Number six, there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
Well, there's no question, but the traffic on the lot's going to be increased as a result of the development. But I think in an area like that, that would be considered normal.
True. True.
I think it's true, and I would note that it, the area, right now, the building is very blighted and this will improve the neighborhood as far as the building goes.
Sure.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion. Okay, to grant the special exception. Butch?
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A question, Madam Chair. Did you want the SPR as a condition or just, is that like a finding of fact? Because they are going to site plan review and the planning board does look at the drainage, so.
Right, well.
It's your call.
I mean, Dave, are you happy with it? Just, we just want to note that the zoning board was concerned, had that concern.
Or we can put it as a.
Yeah, I, I think it's a condition or just, it elevates it a little bit, that's all. Elevates it to the planning board.
It wasn't mentioned at the vote, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Okay. All right, I think we've done our business. So you have your variance and special exception.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry it was so tedious to get through.
They got their money's worth.
I learned a few things.
We, I think we all learned. We got through it, though.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you. No, these are supplies for the zoning folder. You want to hang on? Do you want to keep them with the other paperwork? You already gave me some, I think. Yeah, we have 13 locations and I oversee them. What do you want and I? Yeah, I suggest you bring this one back just because of the annotation.
Oh, yeah.
So now we still have.
Should we have these meetings at 4:30?
Yeah, and Kevin, that's only, I think that's only the second variance I've actually voted for.
Good, then you.
It's the crack in the dam.
It is, it's that, it's hard. It's very hard for me.
I think it is hard.
But the wording of the statute doesn't help, the double negatives.
The double negative, how it's worded is.
So where are you going with your Girl Scouts?
We always go to the camp in Meredith.
Uh-huh. Oh, Whispering Pines, is that still there?
Yeah, Whispering Pines.
It's great.
It should be fun.
Okay, we have unfinished business or we have some new business?
New business.
New business.
You all have your new books.
Okay, yes, thank you very much.
Lovely purple color.
Yeah, very nice.
Don't put it next to last year's book because they clash.
Okay.
The Spring Planning and Zoning Conference is on.
May 30th.
Specifically designed to keep Stephanie away.
Mm-hmm. I know.
Be May 30th. Again, the town would pay your tuition.
Uh-huh, right, which is very nice. If there's anybody.
It sold out really early last year, so let me know as quick as you can.
Okay.
There's a letter here from the Lakes Region Community Developers for a Lakes Region Housing and Economy Snapshot, and that'll be on April 16th. All the information is in the envelope. And now I would like to talk about terms. Several of you are up this year, David, Butch, and Stephanie, I believe, and probably.
I think I am.
No, no, oh, I'm sorry.
Me.
It was one of you guys.
Yeah, it's me, Dave.
Perhaps Tom.
And Tom, yeah.
Because he filled Jack's seat.
Right, yeah, and.
Okay, so he just continued the term.
Jack's seats, Jack's office seat as well.
So we need alternates.
We don't have an alternate.
We do not have an alternate, and I think it's reflected in the minutes we took them off, yes.
Right, so that's what I wanted to make, just make a plea, anybody watching Channel 3, if you would like to join us in the zoning, the very interesting matter of zoning in the town of Plymouth. That where we definitely need some alternates. We'd love to train you and have more members join the board in the future.
A letter of interest in another term to me, or just an email, and I'll pass it on to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. All right, and.
Looks like he's contemplating, I'm like, I don't know that I'm going to do this again.
I have another issue with it, I want to talk about it.
Just joking.
Okay.
And that's it for my end, Madam Chair.
Okay, great, thank you. Dave?
I got a question. I, I wonder why Holness, Groton, Dorchester, Hebron, Bridgewater, you put their public notices in our newspaper and we don't?
The, you mean the Record Enterprise? It's a matter of convenience and timing often.
I thought the application period was established to allow it.
It will, but my thought, and it's just my thought, was that if it's too far in advance, people tend to forget it. We can get it more timely published by putting it in the sun. I understand that there is something before the House concerning changing the requirement and actually leaving it to be posted on our website, kind of reflecting. We'll all be aware of that when it comes, but I think they've been thinking about the publication. The, if it was in last Thursday's Record Enterprise, it's too short of a notice. It's 10 days. So that would put it to the previous week, and again, if.
Right, it, it's just not as timely.
Yes, sometimes it's life getting in the way of me getting the data to them, you know, quick enough to get it on that previous one. And other times, it's just, it just time-wise doesn't work, you know, for us because of the deadlines and the publication dates. So, yes, it can be done, but we couldn't put it in the Thursday before.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I just think it ought to be.
No, I know, I know you're a long-term proponent of.
It's our town newspaper. People are much more likely to look at it than they are the sun, in my view, anyway.
What is the sun, the Laconia?
Laconia sun.
It's a freebie.
I don't even know. But don't, we have it posted in town hall, right?
Oh, absolutely.
And it's posted and.
We're posting it per.
First Tuesday of every month.
It's all legal postings. It's just inconvenient posting.
I'm not saying what we're doing is illegal.
Right, no, no, I totally get it, I really do.
A little less effective than it ought to be.
Right.
I will make every effort to get them in to the Record Enterprise.
We don't pay for it. We don't pay for it anyway, isn't that right?
No, we do.
We do.
Oh, no, the applicant pays.
The applicant pays for it, so it's not always a, it's not a financial crime.
No, not at all, it's, it's definitely a calendric or a clock crutch. And, and part of that is, like I say, I own some of it by not getting the stuff, you know, out, so it can be published early.
Well, I come down and give you a kick in the butt, I mean, every month if you have to do that.
Okay. Sign me up.
Sounds fun.
All right.
No, but, but in the future, I'll, I'll attempt to do that, so.
Like you said, he's coming in next month, I'm more likely than not will not be here next month.
Okay.
More likely than not. Now, that's not an absolute, but it's a more likely than not.
Okay.
So it'll be easier on this next guy.
Oh, he's going to the planning board, though, I think.
No, no, the other fellow said he's coming in next month.
Oh, oh, Mr. Dion, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well, anything else?
Well, we can make a finding that the chair is just as stubborn as I am.
We might have had a standoff if I wasn't such a reasonable person.
I've seen that.
I don't think I'd laugh this hard in a Z B A meeting, ever.
All right.
Did we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Okay. Adjourn at seven, oh, eight, eight twenty-five.
Bedtime.
And, did you second that, Stephanie?
Butch did, Butch did.